Good evening. Tonight is the final night that we have set aside to hear from PTAs, municipalities, civic organizations, and interested individuals on the superintendent's recommended FY twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-two capital budget and amendments to the FY twenty twenty-one through twenty-two six capital improvements program. As you can see, in light of COVID- nineteen, we are meeting virtually and hearing all testimonies will be conducted virtually this year. Tonight's hearing will be broadcast live on television and MCPS media, including MCPS Spanish YouTube channel. If alternatives are passed during the board's work next work session scheduled for November the twelfth, the board will hold a hearing on November the seventeenth. If no alternatives are passed, then there will not be a hearing on November the seventeenth. As always, board members are looking forward to hearing and giving thoughtful consideration to your testimony. The board is scheduled to take final action on these matters on their meeting at our meeting on November the nineteenth, and that meeting will begin at five thirty P. M. The order of speakers is listed on the agenda that is available on board docs, and board members will have the opportunity to read your testimony that's listed on the website, as well as we will hear from the community members that have written testimony, have sent in audio and video presentations. But tonight, we will only hear audio and video presentations. So at this time, I will acknowledge that we have received two written testimonies from elected officials, the mayor of Rockville, Bridget Donnell Newton, and mayor of the city of Gaithersburg, Jed Ashman. So thank you both for sending in your written testimony. At this time, I'm going to just acknowledge my colleagues, and I will begin first with Vice President Wolf.
Good evening, Brenda Wolf, District Five.
Mr. Asante.
Good evening. I'm Nick Asante, the student member of the board.
Ms. Dixon.
Good evening, Jeanette Dixon, member at large of the board.
Dr. Daca.
Good evening, District One.
Mrs. O'Neal.
Good evening, Pat O'Neal, District Three.
Ms. Silvestre.
Good evening, Carla Silvestre, schoolroom member at large.
Mrs. Smandrowski.
Good evening, Rebecca Smandrowski, District Two.
Okay, and Dr. Smith.
Good evening, Jack Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
All right. So this time, we will get, we will begin with our first speaker, and that is Carrie Cook, President, Board of the Commissioners of the town of Poolsville.
Hello from beautiful Poolsville, the hidden gem and best-kept secret of Maryland and the Washington, DC area. We have it all here in Poolsville, a thriving and connected community, open spaces, parks galore, restaurants, events, activities for youth and seniors alike, historical preservation, love of the environment, and schools. Wonderful, public, taxpayer-funded schools that the community rallies around, schools that are at the center of our little corner of the world. What we do not have is a modern Poolsville High School. What we do not have here in Poolsville are numbers. We are short on numbers, which means we're short on votes, which means we're short on political representation, and of course, at the end of the day, short on money. In a county whose focus must undeniably be the many diverse populations and the unprecedented growth around us, we simply cannot compete with those calls for action. We come up short. But you, the Board of Education, have finally heard us. We have been making the same, often the distance plea from our little town in the ag reserve way out in Poolsville for literally decades. You are understanding now that there are other factors.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Erin.
Okay, we got cut off. Sure.
Hello from beautiful Poolsville, the hidden gem and best-kept secret of Maryland and the Washington, DC area. We have it all here in Poolsville, a thriving and connected community, open spaces, parks galore, restaurants, events, activities for youth and seniors alike, historical preservation, love of the environment, and schools. Wonderful, public, taxpayer-funded schools that the community rallies around, schools that are at the center of our little corner of the world. What we do not have is a modern Poolsville High School. What we do not have here in Poolsville are numbers. We are short on numbers, which means we're short on votes, which means we're short on political representation, and of course, at the end of the day, short on money. In a county whose focus must undeniably be the many diverse populations and the unprecedented growth around us, we simply cannot compete with those calls for action. We come up short. But you, the Board of Education, have finally heard us. We have been making the same, often the distance plea from our little town in the ag reserve way out in Poolsville for literally decades. You are understanding now that there are other factors to consider for new schools in addition to capacity, and we thank you. You know that the last revitalization for our high school took place in nineteen seventy-eight. That's forty-two years ago. We still affectionately refer to the gym, which during that time was built, and it's now the size of most middle school gyms, but we call it the New Gym still. The New Gym was built forty-two years ago. But you are now hearing us, and we thank you. You know, of course, that the majority of the Poolsville High School that stands today was built in nineteen fifty-three. That's sixty-seven years ago. You know that this is about more than just asbestos and lack of ADA bathrooms and crumbling infrastructure. It's about fairness. It's about access to equal treatment. You have heard us and approved Poolsville High School for a major capital project. We know that Poolsville High School can be a model for the new world we are all in now, a post-COVID future in high school program development. We thank you so much for approving this project. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to our schools, our communities, and most of all, our children. Thank you from the past, the current, and the future, Poolsville High School students.
Thank you, MCPS.
Thank you, MCPS.
Poolsville Wolves!
Very nice. Next, we will hear from Jerome Klobickowski. He's the Commissioner of the town of Poolsville.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, Board President Evans, and members of the Montgomery County Board of Education. I am Jerry Klobickowski, Poolsville Town Commissioner, representing Poolsville in the heart of Montgomery County's Agricultural Reserve, Poolsville's and Western Montgomery County citizens, whose children attend Poolsville Cluster Schools, as well as those out-of-clustered parents, whose children attend the Poolsville High School Hole Magnet. With Veterans Day approaching, let me say thank you to all of the veterans and those serving on active duty, who through their honor, courage, and commitment have helped and are helping to preserve our country. May God bless and protect them all. The Town of Poolsville Commissioners, Fair Access Committee for Western Montgomery County, and community members who participated in the PHS Design Review, found Options A and B design proposals exciting, which would have resulted in a brand-new school. We understand the educational opportunities that Option C would provide would be first-rate, but the proposed facility does not match what other county high schools have. It would require portables and be very disruptive to the educational environment. Option C does not reward the school for its consistent, exceptional academic record, recognize our unique location in the agricultural reserve, support the needs of our Western Montgomery County community it would serve, include the same amenities that are either incorporated in new construction or retrofitted into existing county high schools, such as competitive gymnasiums and wellness centers. It does not identify innovative technologies that would be incorporated into the building to increase efficiency and reduce its carbon footprint. It does not upgrade our athletic fields, enhance student, teacher, or staff security by having two buildings. Due to our projected student population, Option C retains the forty-year-old undersized gym. Regardless of our total enrollment, we still have the same number of student athletes and field the same number of varsity and junior varsity athletic teams as every other MCPS high school. The gymnasium's limited capacity inhibits the availability of practice time and space, as well as it prevents many of our community from watching and cheering on our local athletes. Two examples are the twenty-seventeen Girls' Varsity Basketball Championship Game and the annual Poolsville Elementary School Teacher/Staff vs. Parent Fundraising Basketball Games. Our students experience the same problems as many other students have, but design does not include a wellness center. We understand that the building will comply with ADA requirements, including wheelchair accessibility, and we want to ensure this is the case for the entire site. Let us use this opportunity to create a school which helps maintain Montgomery County's reputation for academic excellence. Our community's been patient. It deserves better. What will be built will be your legacy to Western Montgomery County for a very long time. Attachment A lists other Poolsville Cluster Schools' capital improvement needs. They are just as important to us and need to be accomplished. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to raise these issues with you, and let me wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, Happy Hanukkah, and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
At this time, we will hear from Erin Cherian, a student at Poolsville High School.
Hi, my name is Erin Cherian. I am a junior at Poolsville High School, and I would like to comment on the reconstruction plans of Poolsville High School, specifically the removal of the auxiliary gym. I'm a two-sport athlete. I played varsity soccer and basketball last year, and I am part of the global program at Poolsville. It's no secret, Poolsville is in need of a little renovation, but I believe that the removal of the aux gym will have a negative impact, specifically on winter sports, as well as fall and spring sports, and even on student academics. Poolsville has a very small main gym in comparison to other high schools. It's honestly more like a middle school gym, except my middle school gym was bigger. Other high schools have these huge bleachers, which, when retracted, creates much more space, multiple court areas, and yeah, two to three teams can practice there easily at one time. We have five bleachers on each side, and it's not enough space for adequate practices for multiple teams at a time. We've had practices combining teams. You can't get as many reps in. It's not as fast-paced. It's cramped, and it overall affects the quality of the practice. And on top of that, both spring and fall sports use the aux gym when they can't use the fields. Poolsville, although a small school, has the same number of athletic teams and players as any other school in MCPS, and it's not exactly fair to be given less practice space because we do have the same numbers when it comes to sports. Not to mention, we're just as competitive, and we want high-quality teams as well. Getting rid of the auxiliary gym, we would likely either have to combine practices or stay longer at school to attend shorter practices in order to fit everything in. Being from Clarksburg, I live thirty minutes away from Poolsville, and as a freshman and sophomore, I couldn't drive, and I didn't have anywhere to go so often. I would stay at school from seven o'clock in the morning till seven at night, and I would only get home at around eight-ish, which, one, is very draining staying at school that long, and also stressful because it often leaves little time to do my homework, much less anything else. Personally, I didn't have access to a computer after the library would close, so I couldn't even finish half of my work after school. Without an aux gym, a future student, especially one from out of the area, would likely have an even more difficult time than I did in regards to schoolwork. I ask that you please consider these factors coming from a student athlete. The auxiliary gym is vital, not only in creating quality, competitive teams, but additionally for an athlete's academics. I'm glad Poolsville High School is finally being reconstructed, but for the long run and so that we can avoid having to realize the consequences in the future, let's do it right the first time. Thank you so much for your time.
Next, we will hear from Natalie Campbell from Neillsville Middle School.
Dear Board of Education members, I'm Natalie Campbell. I am a seventh grader at Neillsville Middle School. I'm asking you to please approve the construction budget for a new Neillsville Middle School to be built by twenty-twenty-four or earlier. I would like to start off by saying it feels like the school is going to fall on me at any minute. A lot of the ceiling is bent, broken, or gone. This is a problem all over the building, not just in one place. At times, I worry it's just going to fall on me while I'm doing my work. It's hard to put my concentration into work when all I can think of is the ceiling falling and hitting me or others. Some of the ceiling is gone in the locker rooms. Some of the lockers are broken, and the doors are old and make squeaking noises. The showers don't work, and they are nasty. They have mold on them. The smell is really strong, so it's hard to focus on what I should be doing. We don't have many windows. It's the point where teachers make fake windows to see outside. I see little to no sunlight all day because of the lack of windows. The hallways are really small. With so many kids, it feels like we're being squished together. It's worse for the smaller kids because it feels like others are going to trample you. Last year, when I was a sixth grader, the sixth-grade hallway had one-stall bathrooms, which had long lines. Sometimes, we'd miss out on class and be late because of that. The stalls themselves are really old. The door isn't big enough so you can see into the stall even when it's closed. The lock is also broken, so you have to hold the door shut. It's uncomfortable, and it feels like someone's watching you because most of the time you aren't in there alone. All of this combined makes school horrible. I hate being in an environment like this five days of the week. We need a new school. It's not safe for us to be in a small place like Neillsville. This is why we are asking for a new school, so we feel safe and have a great place to learn in. Please approve the construction budget for a new Neillsville Middle School. Thank you for your time.
And that concludes our students, and now we will go on to hear from the MCCPTA President Cynthia Simonson.
Good evening, Cynthia Simonson with MCCPTA. I want to thank you for the opportunity afforded each cluster to provide comment on the CIP. Historically, the clusters have felt compelled to bring in large numbers of supporters wearing shirts from their designated schools, bringing signs in hopes of getting your attention. I'm hopeful going forward, schools that are overcrowded or in poor condition needn't feel that step as necessary to garner your attention. Others will be raising area-specific concerns, but I have two more global items I'd like to raise tonight. First, does programming follow facilities, or do facilities follow programming? When the question was raised a few years ago, the answer was programming should be placed where there's need. So therefore, facilities follows the programming. While philosophically, many of us agree with this approach, practically, given the demands on our capital budget, this may not be prudent. I'd urge the board to look at the MCPS programming recommendations against the school's current capacity. The expansion of elementary programs, something we heartily embrace, can create capacity issues in schools if there are not adequate adjustments. This is a tricky space because no clusters will ever want to stand up here saying anything that could deny their local schools' programming opportunities. But yet, when MCPS staff recommends regional offerings be placed in school that might already be at capacity, sometimes it's schools that already have a couple of portables on the blacktop. That hundred-plus additional students creates an impact. These programming decisions are being made resulting in years, sometimes of the child's entire elementary school experience, but not having enough adequate play space, overcrowded and insufficient bathrooms and common spaces. Not to mention, a school that has a decade of overcrowding sometimes is sidelined because this new school now has a greater need. MCCPT has supported, expanded programming for years. These programming opportunities may not solve, but could certainly lessen some overcrowding in areas if used well. I urge the board to review all current and programming recommendations closely, as programming should be used to assist in addressing facility utilization issues, not create more overcrowding facility challenges than we already have. Second, Steve Augustino, MCCPTA longtime board member, said this two years ago. I respectfully suggest that MCPS needs a new approach to maintenance of its facilities. It's funded a little bit in SIP, our CIP, and a little bit in the operating budget, and consequently, at each hearing, maintenance never gets its full view. It's always overshadowed by pleas about overcrowding or safety upgrades here, and pleas by regarding staffing and operating budgets. As a result, maintenance gets lost. Two years later, I see the same concern. The COVID-nineteen closure of schools certainly has revealed many of the fractures in our system. With regard to the capital planning, the emphasis on ventilation brings our most expensive maintenance item and replacement item, the school's HVAC system, to the top of the list as we consider readying our buildings for students. The maintenance of the buildings is largely hidden from the public. Appendix K of the CIP reports the prior years, the prior summer's planned maintenance, but there are no published replacement schedules of routine items related to the major systems and components. Each summer, capital planning team encourages our clusters to send forward school needs. Many of the concerns, we are advised, are actually maintenance issues, best addressed through a work order. The process is to ask the principal to submit work orders for the missing bathroom sink or the broken ceiling tiles. So those items get into the queue. Unfortunately, there's no ability to see the list of outstanding work orders, and if I understood correctly, as recently as last year, these work orders are still submitted in hard copy. So there isn't a quick and dirty report that we can look at to see the history of maintenance efforts. There's also no ability to verify how long a maintenance issue has been outstanding. Has that sink been waiting to be fixed for days, or weeks, or years? The schools are the center of the community. Certainly, this has been made clear by this pandemic. The physical shell of a well-maintained building can last close to a hundred years, but some of the buildings are falling apart after forty. Leaking roofs, inconsistent temperatures, mold, buckling floors, infestation, these are all maintenance issues, and how those issues are being addressed is not clear. I'd ask the board to reflect on Steve's recommendation two years ago to hold hearings specifically on the maintenance issues of our schools and create transparency around how these buildings are being maintained. Thank you for the opportunity to share these concerns with you, and I look forward to our continued collaboration in addressing our facility needs. Ms. Dixon, as this might be my last opportunity before your retirement, I want to take a moment to acknowledge your service on this board, and thank you for your service to our students. I wish you well on this second retirement. Hope you will continue to be a voice for our students as you enter the next phase of your journey. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you to our elected officials. Thank you to our students, and thank you to our MCCPTA president for coming today to share your comments. And I'm going to open it up to board members to ask if you have any questions or comments after this portion of the testimonies. And I will begin first with Nick Asante. If you just tell me no, or you can make your statement.
I do have a question, but first, I would like to thank everyone who testified, especially the students. I think someone mentioned Poolsville not getting a wellness center, and I, my question is, aren't there guidelines as to which schools can receive wellness centers, or is that not the case?
Sure. So I think what most understand as wellness centers are what are considered funded and operated by our Department of Health and Human Services. So Health and Human Services does work through that. We work in consultation with them to identify locations, and if it's a location they would recommend, then we certainly look to create some level of partnership on that front. I can defer to Adrian, but I do not believe at this time Health and Human Services is recommending that we pursue a wellness center on this particular project.
They do go through and they look at priorities, what their priorities are at HHS, and they develop a budget based on those priorities, the criteria that they have. It really is through HHS, and as Seth indicated, we work with them. Actually, we collaborate with them. We let them know what projects are coming on in the horizon, and then they let us know if they're interested, and then we collaborate and work with them. So it is a decision by HHS whether to put a wellness center or anything, languages to learning, anything like that, and we will work with them. But it has not been a decision by HHS to do that at Poolsville.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Daca?
Yeah, just want to talk about, well, I want somebody to talk about the auxiliary gym situation at Poolsville. I do remember the main gym is really small, and it was a long time ago that I was there for basketball, and it was really small. So I don't, I didn't know what we were doing about that.
So currently, you know, we are still working through concepts with the community. As it stands now, you know, we are looking to maintain the existing gym, so we would maintain an auxiliary gym, and we would maintain the footprint of the existing gym. We will have to, obviously, we've heard through our community meetings, as well as you did tonight, about opportunities to expand the larger gym, and that will be something that we have to explore and certainly bring back to the board, any cost implications of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Dixon and Mrs. O'Neal.
All right. And so, thank you, Sheppard. First, just thank you to Cynthia Simonson for your kind words. I know that, you know, we haven't had students in school, obviously, for, you know, this new school year, and so hopefully, you know, a lot of the items that the student from Neillsville mentioned, you know, have been taken care of. But I'm just wondering if we could, you know, just ensure that, you know, especially things like a lock on the bathroom door when students are going to the bathroom, and just to have someone go up and check to make sure that when the school is open, that, you know, as much as possible, everything will be in order for students. And then my other question was just about the work orders. I thought at one point we were putting those all online for folks to see. Is that still going on or no?
So Ms. Dixon, we will definitely send the board a follow-up of the conditions at Neillsville in terms of what's been done this past summer and this fall. And then in terms of the putting the work orders online, there was some initial investigation into that, I believe it was the year before last, but we have not, as of yet, developed a full system to do that. Ms. Maguire, is there anything else you can add to where we are in that conversation?
Certainly. Thank you. So we have provided some additional information about the schedule of the larger placement projects that Ms. Simonson was also mentioning as part of the CIP, and so we can, we can look at that approach again. When it comes to the, to the work orders, it is a, it's an, it's an old system, and as, again, as she was referencing, and so, you know, we certainly do understand the interest by communities to understand the, the projects and work going on in their schools, and I think that's an interest that we want to be able to speak to, and again, need to find the right bridge to provide that information in a way that's going to be accessible and useful information for the public.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Smith.
Mrs. O'Neal, and then we'll hear from Vice President Wolf.
Yes, my question related to the work order situation as well, and I remember, I mean, actually, the last two years, we've had lengthy conversations at this particular moment about length of time, and at various times when PTAs have testified, actually, there turned out to be some situations where where no work order had been submitted. I just wonder what we have remaining in work order backlog, what sort of the average time is, and what we're doing this year without kids in the buildings to sort of catch up on some of those items.
That has been something we've been working on. And that certainly the competing interest there has been the work with HVAC systems and looking at how to organize buildings and structure classrooms and those things across the system. But we can send you a full report, kind of across the system of what is getting done because we are trying to take full advantage of the opportunity to have more time and more ability to get into schools when students are not there to follow up. So we can send you a full report on that in the follow-up of this meeting.
Okay, Vice President Wolf?
I actually wanted to follow up on the work orders because I distinctly remember my first CIP hearing when I came to the board and a question arose at Springbrook High School that we talked about setting up a system so that the data was readily available as to when work orders came in and when they were handled. So I just wanted to know, I know HVAC has to be our primary concern right now, but is there a timeframe that you're working within in trying to get up some sort of data dashboard about what is and what is not happening?
Yes, that is one of the goals in the system as we build a more integrated data system around the operations. You know, and right now we're building out the budget and finance system. We have launched the student information system and we're building and will hope to launch the HR system. We have looked at the maintenance systems and they do need to be upgraded. Then we also need to find a way to integrate the larger projects, as Ms. Maguire was saying, with the key facilities indicators. Because the problem with the work order question is always, as a former school principal, any many people on this screen can share that you have work orders that get put in and they're fixed that day because it's an emergency. You have work orders that put in and they're not done because the system says, no, we're not going to paint that bathroom that color. And you have work orders that are longer term, bigger efforts. And so our goal is to tie them, the significant work orders to the key facility indicators and the health and safety in the work orders to be able to classify them in different ways. So that when someone looks at that, they can make sense out of it instead of just the mass number of work orders from 230-some facilities across the system. We are working. Certainly, the COVID-19 circumstance has slowed down and hampered that sort of.
Thank you. I just don't want that to get lost because some of the work orders that are in seem to me that they're very minor things that could have been handled easily. And like I said, I do know that we have to do HVAC first, but I think we do need a system of tracking. And that's what my real concern is, tracking to be sure that this stuff is getting handled, you know, pretty expeditiously. Thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Mrs. Mondroski, and then we'll hear from Ms. Sebastian.
Thank you. Yeah, nope, I think everything has pretty much been addressed. My big question was about where we were with my request for the dashboards for maintenance orders and it's been answered. So thank you very much and thank everyone, I want to thank everyone for testifying tonight.
Okay, Ms. Sebastian?
Yeah, just a question. In the Poolsville testimony, we heard about options A, B, and C. Is option C what was presented to the board in terms of the project for Poolsville?
Mr. Adams, can you share information with us on that?
Yes, absolutely. So the options they talked about are the different concepts that were developed by the architects. And concept C was, is in line with the scope of work that was presented to the board at the previous work session. So yes, and certainly that information, you know, our presentations and those concepts are all published online on our website. So certainly, it is there for now and we will continue that work with the community moving forward. But that is the starting point of our, of our work is the concept C that was mentioned.
And the use of portables reference, is that during construction or after the rebuild?
Yes, I believe that that reference was during construction, similar to when we spoke about the swing space during that project.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes board questions for this portion. And we can now go on to the next video, which will be from Lauren Berkowitz. She's from the Winston Churchill Cluster, sorry.
Hello, board and MCPS staff. My name is Lauren Berkowitz and I'm here to testify today as one of the Winston Churchill Cluster coordinators on behalf of the cluster. First, we would like to thank you for the funds for the construction of Potomac Elementary School, which was completed this past September. I have seen the school in a video and it looks beautiful and it will serve the administration, staff, and students well for many years to come. Two items that we continue to follow in our cluster are overcrowding at Churchill High School and adequacy of air turnover rates and HVAC repairs. Winston Churchill High School is currently overcrowded and there are portable classrooms in the parking lot. In FY17, funds were appropriated for facility planning to determine the feasibility, scope, and cost of the capacity study. However, the six-year projection for enrollment has dropped and the study was not conducted. In this six-year CIP, there was an increase in enrollment projection and the FY21 appropriation was approved to conduct a feasibility study for the proposed addition. However, since the overcrowding projection is more than 200 seats, the enrollment will be monitored until additional capacity is added. We understand that schools are way more overcrowded than Churchill, but we just want you to keep it in mind in the future and we will continue to monitor the issue. Secondly, and perhaps most importantly, at this critical moment, we would like to request that all HVAC changes to ventilation and repairs are made quickly to ensure a safe, as possible, return to school as soon as possible during the COVID-19 pandemic. It is critical that our students get back to school when it is safe and schools need to be ready for them. Administration, faculty, and staff also need to be comfortable and safe when they return. Again, this is not the only issue, this is not only an issue for our cluster and we request that it be addressed county-wide. While the virtual learning is much improved from the spring and is working well for some students, there are some students that cannot learn remotely and are experiencing mental health distress due to not being able to experience school in person. Getting back to school should be made a priority for these students. And whether it's fixing an HVAC, buying more PPE, or building outdoor structures for classrooms outside with CIP funds or operating depending on the type of structure, getting these students that are struggling in particular with mental health and safety concerns is critical. Many schools in DC as well as private schools in Montgomery County had opened incorporating outside classrooms. I hope we can implement this at least for the children who need it the most. I'm not saying all children need to go back right away, but for these children with mental health issues that don't have an adult at home or a safe home, it is critical that they go back. And children with special needs and other reasons that they absolutely need to be in person, these are the children we should focus on getting back safely first. And we could potentially do this by innovative solutions. Thank you for your time and dedication to Montgomery County Public Schools. Please continue to stay healthy and strong in this crisis.
Next, we will hear from Jane Lierman from the Poolsville Cluster.
President Evans, Dr. Smith, Dr. McKnight, members of the board and MCPS leadership. My name is Jane Lierman and I proudly represent the small but mighty Poolsville Cluster. We are Monocacy Elementary, John Poole Middle, Poolsville Elementary, and Poolsville High Schools. Thank you for this opportunity to advocate for our students. We support the overall objectives outlined in the superintendent's recommended 2022 capital budget and amendments to the CIP. Moreover, we appreciate the meetings that our community has had with the architect and MCPS staff about the new high school. After so many years of waiting, we're all eager to see a 21st century high school in our community. We believe that we all share the same vision for this school. A new PHS will be the first post-COVID high school open in the county and with that, there are opportunities. We can create a structure that provides a rigorous programming, healthier HVAC and water systems, and inviting outdoor spaces. But as we proceed, we're discovering that the devil is in the details. Restricted development in the ag reserve means that the new PHS will be smaller than most other high schools. Accordingly, it will be built to accommodate 1,500 students. This aligns with MCPS enrollment guidelines and will give us room to grow. However, the building itself is not a comprehensive high school space. Instead, it is an enhanced middle school structure. We've been told that this design is recommended because the new school will accommodate only 1,500 students, which is the size of a newer middle school. PE and other athletic space is the most obvious problem with the new design. At this time, we have two gyms, one weight room, one cafeteria, which houses sports, and a hallway space for practice. The current architectural plans show one full gym, one wrestling room, and one dance studio. A separate weight room is not on the plans. Newer MCPS high schools are built with double gyms that can be divided into two rooms. The current plans indicate that only a single gym will be built. This, plus the lack of a new weight room, means that the new design will give us less athletic space than the old school. It also eliminates practice fields used for PE. Yet we still have the same number of high school athletic programs as other county high schools. The negative impact of a middle school structure in a high school environment cannot be overstated. Even more baffling is comparing the structure to other high schools that are under 1,500 students, like Damascus and Good Council. On September 30th, 2019, Damascus reported an official enrollment of 1,353 students. This information shown on the 2019-2020 Antiglans Report. Our Lady of Good Council has a steady enrollment of 1,200 students, but their PE and athletic facilities are in par with much larger schools in the metro area. In light of these facts, why would a 21st century Poolsville high school have less athletic capacity than a smaller older school? We also want to inform you that the option presented by the architect has the highest operating cost compared with the other options. The cost per student of the new building aligns with middle school rather than high school criteria. An analysis is included in my written testimony and shows that the cost per student for the new PHS is significantly less than other high schools. Another pressing issue is the HVAC problem at Monocacy Elementary School. We understand that money is being set aside for HVAC systems and we desperately need funds targeted towards the school. The school has installed a dehumidifier in each room, but on very humid days, the air is still very damp and dehumidifiers must be emptied several times a day. The community is concerned that the humid air is a health risk, particularly in the age of COVID. We understand the challenges you face as we navigate this new and unpleasant academic landscape. But when millions of dollars are being spent for a new high school, we must ensure that the building will be relevant and scalable for decades to come. We will partner with you and ensure that a robust high school structure is funded and built to serve Poolsville and our out-of cluster community. Again, thank you for this opportunity to advocate for our students.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Deidra Apple from the McGruder Cluster.
Dr. Smith, members of the board, thank you for your time today. My name is Deidra Apple and I, along with Kristen Erdheim and Kimberly Glassman, proudly represent the McGruder Cluster. Our cluster is home to 5,300 students across eight schools and we're extremely appreciative to have several facilities on the current capital projects list. We realize the pandemic has put an additional constraint on an already tight budget. However, we would like to ensure that these large previously approved projects continue to stay on target. We also have a few additional improvement requests so that our schools can be made as safe and clean as possible for when our students are able to return. McGruder is home to several MCPS special education programs, including autism. As that program continues to grow, they need to expand into a third classroom. We ask that the board fully fund this classroom retrofit so that it more than meets the learning and socialization needs of our students. Shady Grove Middle School, for the third year in a row, is requesting an update to their outdoor track. This track, really a path around the school, is used for outdoor PE as well as for the cross-country team for practices and meets. This track path, however, is loose and has broken pieces and is rife with bumps and divots that are often the cause for our students and student athletes to trip and fall. We ask that this track be repaved or at the very least have those unsafe areas flattened out so that it can be as safe as possible for our students. Redland Middle School was renovated about 12 years ago and our teachers recently did a great job painting uplifting messages on all of the bathrooms. But other than that, it hasn't been painted in 12 years. The Redland family respectfully requests an overall facility paint job. Consider it a mental health activity to boost the spirits of our Redland Bulldogs. The Resnick community is thrilled about the new accessible playground structure that was recently installed over the summer. While the playground is great, the playground surface is not. I think that one of Resnick's own students, Caleb, and his mom, Ally, are best to describe and demonstrate our concern.
Hi, my name is Ally Danielson and this is my son Caleb. We're here at Judith Resnick Elementary School where Caleb attends and is in the physical disabilities program. We were very excited earlier this year that Resnick got a new set of really great accessible playground equipment. But we're a little disappointed that the surfacing is like a mulch carpet, which is okay, however, the rest of the playground that was originally there still has regular mulch surfacing, which can make it difficult to ambulate. So as you can see, it's a little uneven and it's a little difficult for kids with disabilities who use equipment to get around. Resnick is one of only two schools in the county that is home to the physical disabilities program. And if there's any playgrounds at schools that would benefit from more accessible flooring, it would be here at Resnick. There's also another smaller playground in the front of the school that's just for pre-K and kindergarten students. So we would really appreciate some more level playing, surfacing here at Resnick and the kiddos would really appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Caleb. The students and families at Flower Hill want to thank MCPS for the long-awaited completion of the parking lot. Another long outstanding request for Flower Hill is to soundproof the all-purpose room. Our Flower Hill students are required to have silent lunch because overheard overhead announcements can't be heard. That lack of interaction and camaraderie has a severe negative impact on our students. Soundproofing the all-purpose room would allow our students to do what kids do best, interact with our friends without disrupting nearby classrooms. Cassell Elementary School requests a sidewalk so that our students who need to walk between the portables and the gym can do so safely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Carolyn Garvey from the Gathersburg Cluster.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Garvey, representing the Gathersburg Cluster. We appreciate all you've done for our cluster, however, there are CIP needs that still need to be addressed. Before I go into those specific needs, I want to address MCPS's October 29th recommendation to pause the final decision on the boundary for the new elementary school. I recognize the reason for wanting to do the additional analyses because enrollment for this whole county has dropped as a result of the COVID emergency. However, I would caution the board in proceeding with this pause. The reason the boundary study process was expedited to begin with was because the surrounding neighborhood's distrust for MCPS. Now, this distrust is based on the decision to have the neighborhood in which Forest Oak Middle School is located in not go to that middle school. However, when this decision was made a couple decades ago, the neighborhood was given the impression from MCPS that they would go to the middle school. So because the Forest Oak Middle School boundary decision and the site selection of Kelly Park, the community does not trust MCPS or the board. And by putting a pause on this, you'd be going back on what you committed to do and essentially be adding gas to this distrust. My understanding is that the 3,684 student enrollment decrease is a decrease for the whole county and not just the Gathersburg Cluster. And when it is safe to go back to school, the enrollment numbers in our cluster will likely increase to where they were before the pandemic. Okay, so now moving on to items that were, that are either new CIP issues or the division Okay, so now moving on to items that are either new CIP issues, or the Division of Capital Planning told us that the items would not be in the CIP. The first on my list here is for Gaithersburg Elementary School. The school needs new lights in the gym. The current ones in the gym are the original lights and need an upgrade. The school also needs a new trash room. To address an ongoing mouse issue, it was determined last winter that the current trash room, which is off the cafeteria, needs to be moved outside the building to the shed by the loading dock. However, this move has not taken place. The school also needs an updated sign on the front of the school that states Gaithersburg Elementary and not just Gaithersburg. People and temporary staff looking for Gaithersburg Middle School often mistake Gaithersburg Elementary as a middle school because the two schools share a street, and one school, Gaithersburg Elementary, is missing a full sign. Next on my list here is Latinsville Elementary School. The school needs a wheelchair-accessible ramp installed at the front right doors of the school building. Both Summit Hall Elementary School and Gaithersburg Middle School both need new HVAC systems. This is an ongoing issue for Summit Hall due to the multiple different units in the building from various past renovations. At Gaithersburg Middle School, the issue impacts airflow and classroom temperatures either going too hot or too cold, which results in a lack of focus for students in the classroom. Next on my list here is Gaithersburg High School. This high school needs more security cameras around the outside of the school. The outdated cameras were replaced with updated ones, however, no additional cameras were installed in other parts of the school as requested. This is a very large school and needs more security cameras on the outside of the building, particularly in the large parking lot, the stadium, and athletic fields, and other areas where there are blind spots. Now on to items that we understand the Division of Capital Planning to be evaluating, and our cluster appreciates that they are being evaluated, and we want to emphasize why they are important. First on my list here is for Summit Hall Elementary School. The school has had an ongoing request for a handicap-accessible door. My understanding is that the school received a form to complete a few months ago, but has not heard anything since. Next on my list here is Strawberry Knoll Elementary School. The school needs a sidewalk that will let student walkers and their parents cross the parking lot without crossing in front of cars. The school also needs a wheelchair-access door connected to the visitors' management system. The school also needs more bathrooms. Currently, the school has three student bathrooms to serve 650 students. In addition to that, some of their pre-K and autism classrooms need individual bathrooms. Students with special needs need to have separate bathrooms from the other students so they may have privacy when they're being cared for by staff. That is on my list here. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and then we hope you consider addressing these Before I end, I've got 15 minutes. I have additional items listed in a written document that I'm also sending with this video. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to all the cluster coordinators, and at this time, we're going to open it up for board member comments or questions, and I'm going to go in the reverse order. So I'm going to start with Ms. Sivestry.
Just a process question. Gaithersburg Cluster had a long list of projects that they were, I guess, waiting to be addressed. So do we assume that those are work orders that have been placed and they're waiting to hear about, or are these new to us?
Well, they could be work orders. They're more likely in the queue for different levels of work on different schools. For example, Summit Hall and the HVAC would not be a work order. That would be a new system, potentially. And so we can send the board a follow-up on Gaithersburg Cluster and exactly what each of those projects is in reference to the speaker's conversation about them tonight, if that would be helpful.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, we can do that.
Mrs. Mondroski.
Yeah, thank you. I don't really have any questions. I just do have a lot of concerns about the testimony from the Gaithersburg Cluster. I know we have a lot of priorities right now, especially with trying to get our schools prepared for students and staff to be able to return to the buildings. But I do want to also just kind of reiterate how important our security cameras and things like that are to the safety of our students and our staff. So thanks for everyone's testimony.
Vice President Wolf.
Did you call me?
I did.
Okay, I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you. I told you. I don't have a lot of questions, but I did hear a lot of concerns around wheelchair access and handicap accessibility and accessible playgrounds. And some of these schools I have not visited, so I'm concerned that the schools are accessible to the students and to the teachers and parents that need to get into the building. And I didn't know if you could talk about that or get back to me later on that or where we are with those kinds of things.
Sure, we would need a lot more time than we have right now to talk about all of them across the system and where we are with them. But specifically to Resnick Elementary School, I think Mr. Adams can brief us on that particular school in the video that we saw.
Sure, and I think that video was certainly telling in terms of the different surfaces that students experience. I would say the engineered surfaces do meet ADA compliance. They have been historically used, but as with those surfaces, they require morning and afternoon leveling. Certainly, our building services in this current environment are not focused on that work at the time. So it is something that during school, when students are there, they do work on that. I would say we've also piloted through our innovative play space, different options for hard surfaces. We have a pilot that is at Carl Sandberg right now that uses these rubberized surfaces for more of the ADA accessibility requirements. Certainly, it's a pilot because even with those, there's been quite a bit of testimony over the years to oppose those types of surfaces. So we are looking for all sorts of opportunities to make sure our playgrounds are accessible. But that particular one is technically accessible, provided that the building service team morning and night levels it. But I would say that it's not ideal. So we are exploring different ways to provide that accessibility.
Thank you. I would just ask that you review the testimony from Gaithersburg and get back to me on some of the concerns they had around wheelchair accessibility and ramps, because I don't know that they are a priority right at the moment. Nobody's at the school, but I do want to ensure that any students or teachers or parents that need that kind of access can get into the building. Thank you.
We will do that, Ms. Wolf. Thank you.
Mrs. O'Neill.
Yes, following up on the issue about Resnick and the accessibility to the accessible playground, I know that at Longview School, that has a rubberized surface, and we have had opposition to those rubberized surfaces. But across the district, even where we have children who are part of the general education community, we had a student at Somerset Elementary who had spina bifida, but was a general education student. He couldn't get onto the playground because the mulch surface was too uneven or difficult, I guess, also where there are use of railroad ties. I think it's something that we do need to continue to explore because it does create barriers for children, even where we have accessible or adaptable playgrounds. It is a challenge. And just, I appreciate you following up on what appears to be many maintenance issues in the Gaithersburg Cluster.
Okay, next we will hear from Ms. Dixon, followed by Katadaka.
Thank you. I too had a question about the playground surface at Judith Resnick. Maybe we could just hear why we decided to use that mulch surface there, given the needs of a lot of students with special needs. And maybe, do we ever use blacktop surfacing on these playgrounds? I think I've been at schools that have that. And how much would something like that cost to put there? So that could be just a follow-up answer in writing to us. And my other question was just about the signage at Gaithersburg Elementary. I know that those redwood signs are signs that we make in MCPS. That would seem to be an easy fix there for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Katadaka?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate all the things that have been brought to us on the last two nights on this about maintenance. And we really, we have a problem there. We just don't have as much funds as we need for that. And so we do keep hearing that the work orders are not being followed through. So we need to, as the board, really think about how we're going to do this in a better way.
Mr. Asante.
Yeah, I have no additional questions, but I would like to echo all the comments made about accessibility, because that has been a topic that's come up multiple times over the hearings. And I think it would be beneficial to sort of push out, I guess, a progress report on sort of those priority schools and the progress we're making to ensure that they are more accessible, and push that out to community members.
Okay, great. So this concludes board questions, comments, and so now we will continue on with one last cluster coordinator before we move to individuals and organizations. We will hear from Jauna Lee. Please forgive my mispronunciation, and this is from Wooton High School Cluster.
My name is Dream Guan Liu. I am a Wooton Cluster Coordinator. I'm here today to testify on behalf of the Wooton Cluster. Last year, we were very pleased that Wooton High School finally had been recommended for a major capital improvement project with a completion date of 2026. However, it got delayed again for another year in this year's recommendation. In addition, DuFif Elementary School also got delayed with a new completion date of 2023. Our community and I am very concerned with this new timeline, and urge MCPS make sure these projects stay on track and not delayed any longer. Wooton High School is more than 50 years old. The infrastructure has been falling apart. The urgent need, much-needed renovation of Wooton has been repeatedly delayed and deferred. Our community supports a strong county-wide public education system and wants all of our county school facilities to be in top condition so our students can focus on learning and not get distracted by facility problems. Unfortunately, our children at Wooton have started in a facility with leaking roofs, broken bathrooms, non-functional HVAC, and most importantly, potential safety hazards for many years already. The feasibility study in 2015 addressed serious safety concerns with the current Wooton footprint. The plan was to turn the school so that the front entries face the stadium. The front driveway is extremely dangerous with the front of the school facing Wooton Parkway. Students who walk or take public transportation have to navigate the narrow space between the buses, walk across the driveway, watching out for moving vehicles, and between parked cars to get into the school. Many students have described to me close cars with cars and buses, and a faculty member described the vehicle being hit by a bus. We ask that the school, the MCPS, approves a fund to address the safety issue with the driveway as soon as possible, and let's not wait for a tragedy to occur. Maintaining the infrastructure at Wooton is a daily struggle. We thank the administration and the building services for their amazing work, keeping the students safe and comfortable so they can focus on learning. The infrastructure at Wooton has been failing for years since the building is 50 years old. Old aged piping system is rusty and leaking, requiring buckets to catch the leaking water. One of the many areas Wooton students try to avoid by all means is bathroom. The bathrooms are dirty and worn down with broken stall doors and sinks. Many Wooton students would not go to bathrooms at our school, including my own two kids. Additionally, the aged HVAC is inconsistent. Some of the rooms have no air conditioning. Others have no heat. Since Wooton CIP has been delayed again, we ask MCPS address some of the urgent and safety issues immediately, as well as some of the ADA items. Please start the work ACP while the school closes so some of the work can be done before the students and staff return to school in spring. We were sad to know that Cold Spring Elementary School once again was not recommended in this CIP recommendation. Cold Spring was built with an open classroom concept from the 1970s. There were no floor to ceiling walls. The school doesn't have any safe hallways or rooms for students and staff to congregate in during severe weather or other emergencies such as active shooter. We recommend examination of this issue. Thank you for your commitment to providing our students with a high-quality facility that support a first-grade education. Please contact me at 240-839-8565 if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refer to our website, Board Docs, for written testimony. Again, we're only listing audio and video testimony, and so at this time, we will go to individuals and organizations. And next, we will hear from Carla Squina, and that's from Old Georgetown Village Town Home Association.
Carla Squina. President Evans, Vice President Wolf, and members of the Montgomery County Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to testify before you this evening. My name is Carla Squina, and I'm representing Old Georgetown Village, a townhome community with 198 homes immediately to the north of the future Charles W. Woodward High School on Edson Lane. Our community has been working with four other condominium, townhome, and single-family home communities along Edson Lane, comprising 820 homes in total, who oppose the stadium structure that MCPS plans to erect for Woodward High School using the Edson Lane Forest. Representatives from the other communities in this group have already spoken, or will speak this evening, about the fiscal and environmental concerns this plan raises for us, so I won't address them here, though they are of paramount importance to our residents. I'd like to use this time instead to address the argument the proponents of the stadium have put forth to justify destroying the forest. They argue that an onsite stadium is necessary to ensure equity so that Woodward High School will have the same facilities as any typical high school. The term equity in education usually refers to equal access and resources for students from socio-economically disadvantaged neighborhoods and students with disabilities. It's a charged reference and shouldn't be hijacked for use in this situation. There are countless examples within MCPS high schools of programs that are offered at one school but not at another. Walter Johnson offers an excellent Italian language program that culminates in AP Italian. Other high schools do not. McGruder High School offers a unique aviation and aerospace program. Although it's open to all students in Montgomery County, only students from certain schools are offered busing, making it difficult for many to participate. I could go on, but my time is limited. At any rate, as any parent of two or more children knows, equity does not always mean that everything has to be exactly the same. I'd also like to address the process by which a stadium was added to the plans for Woodward High School. MCPS did not originally propose a stadium structure for the project, citing cost, site limitations, and intrusion into the neighborhood. But the Walter Johnson Cluster PTA, a powerful group with the infrastructure to advocate quickly and forcefully, insisted on the stadium anyway. By the time our community was invited to the table, a stadium was already on the plans. And although initial representations of the stadium showed it within the confines of the school property, and MCPS assured us for months that the configuration of athletic facilities was still undecided, subsequent renditions all short within the Edson Lane Forest. In fact, MCPS has already requested a transfer of the forest parcel from the county. As I stated earlier, my community, Old Georgetown Village, has been working with four other communities along Edson Lane to oppose the stadium. We're a motley crew that took a while to get organized with the pandemic. We're at a disadvantage in advocating now since hearings are virtual. We can't show up en masse to demonstrate visually our opposition to the stadium, as did supporters of the stadium one year ago. At this point, we feel lucky if we just get chosen to testify at board hearings. But we want to be heard and not dismissed as a few disgruntled neighbors. The WJ Cluster PTA asserts that it represents 10,000 students, their teachers, and families. But we have many young families in our communities who do not support the stadium, and we are the WJ Cluster community. Where was the broad outreach to individual school PTA members for input about the stadium? Families within the cluster have different priorities, and many are more troubled by the fiscal and environmental implications of the stadium plans than by not having an onsite stadium structure for their children. We ask that the Board of Education consider our concerns seriously and not move forward with plans to construct a $20 million stadium structure for Woodward High School that would destroy the Edson Lane Forest at this time. Instead, we ask for time to pursue inclusive dialogue and decision-making with all stakeholders so that together we can find a solution that meets the needs of both student athletes at the future Woodward High School and those of the broader community so that all may thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Sylvia Ramirez from Neillsville Middle School PTSA.
Hello and good evening. My name is Sylvia Ramirez. I am the PTSA president at Neillsville Middle School. I am also a parent for one student this year and two more coming the next new school year. From all the students, the school, and all Neillsville community, we would like to say thanks to the board for keeping the new Neillsville Middle School project scheduled for 2024 opening based on the October 26th board meeting. We came three years ago here in Clarksburg. We were assigned to go to Rocky Hill Middle School. Based on the boundary study, our new school is now Neillsville Middle School. I would like to share with you tonight that when my son heard that his new school was going to be in Neillsville, he shared with his friends at school. By then, many kids were already aware of the changes. We were not concerned about moving into a new school. But as a parent, I was extremely concerned that my son was told by a classmate that he was going to be attending a school that he was called Prison of the Hill. I embraced the change and became part of the school, and this is why I became part of the PTSA. Not only to help my kids, but to be the voice of all parents who may be having concerns like me. I went to visit the school. And a few minutes later, after I got into the school, I knew why someone told, a kid told my son that he was going to be going to a school that he called Prison of the Hill. There is no reason why kids have to be believing that they are in prison. A school should be fun. A school should be somewhere where they feel safe. And we have the trust that you will be making the change for them. The Neillsville community has been waiting for this change and for this project for many years. It is very important that 2024 completion is maintained. We all know that the challenges as school staff has been facing within the existing building. This is why it's so important, once again, that a new building that is suited for a better learning environment is completed by 2024. Thank you very much for your continuing support. We know that you care as much as we do for our student, our school, and our community. Once again, thank you and have a great night.
Now we will hear from Bruce Bender.
President Evans, Vice President Wolf, and members of the Montgomery County Board of Education. Good evening, and thank you for letting me present testimony tonight. My name's Bruce Bender, and I live on Magic Mountain Drive right behind the current Tilden Middle School playing fields. And I've lived here for 28 years at this resident address and had a couple of girls go through the Montgomery County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention a significant issue relating to the proposed stadium to be built on the Woodward High School expansion project. And that issue is whether you wish to build a $20 million stadium and eliminate the Edson Lane Forest. I think when you look at the big picture of this issue from a global environmental perspective in conjunction with Montgomery County's clear policies on climate change, the answer must be that this stadium should not be built as proposed because it would eliminate the Edson Lane Forest. The Edson Lane Forest is one of the few urban forests in Montgomery County. And if this stadium is built, the forest would be essentially eliminated. And this proposed stadium would be directly contrary to Montgomery County's Declaration of a Climate Emergency and Recommendations of the Montgomery County Technical Group on Sequestration. I've given you the Montgomery County's resolution on climate change, as well as the technical group's recommendations for you to look at as exhibits to my written testimony. But I just wanted to read to you the Montgomery County's resolution that was passed on December 5, 2017 by the County Council. That resolution states that Montgomery County should use all of its powers and resources to number one, declare a climate emergency and initiate a massive global mobilization to restore a safe climate and build a sustainable economy. And number two, transform the climate by reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2027 and reaching 100% by 2035. Now, I recognize that this forest is small compared to the huge existential problem of global warming, and in the scheme of things, will not have a huge, huge effect if it is taken away. However, the elimination of an urban forest is totally contrary to the best environmental interests of Montgomery County citizenry. And there is no doubt that the destruction of this forest will increase greenhouse gases in a time when our county leaders have recognized that there's a climate emergency in our county and in our world. And I'd ask that you consider, when you're considering the funding for Phase Two of the Woodward Expansion Project, that you would keep in mind the environmental impact of this stadium on our county and vote against any funding for a stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker will be Melissa McKenna.
Good evening. My name is Melissa McKenna. This was supposed to be a banner year, a record opening of seven new schools, the last of the RevX series. Instead, we have a pandemic, and ironically, as long as we have waited for them, these bright buildings now wait for us. First, the thank yous. For completing the co-location of Maryvale Elementary and the Carl Sandberg Learning Center, merci beaucoup. For concluding Kevin David's 12-year pursuit with the new Seneca Valley High School. For keeping 2026 as Crown Farm High School's completion date, that year is also the expiration date for this free and only high school site in the county, and construction funds must be in the first two years of the CIP. For listening and letting common sense prevail in pursuing a single new grade three through five school for Joanne Leelook at Broad Acres instead of Sue's separate additions to schools on different academic calendars. Now the polite but firm requests. Clarksburg Elementary, number nine, ASAP. Originally slated for completion in 2021, delayed to '22, and now extended to '23. I would have thought that relieving a school that is 220% over capacity would be everyone's top priority. Basta. Your resolution last November promised the Saybrook and Gaithersburg communities an early decision on Gaithersburg Elementary, number eight, and middle school boundaries to make amends for Forest Oak Middle 20 years ago. Honor that promise without delay and restore our trust. Partner with the City of Rockville for them to meaningfully invest in the Maryvale-Sandberg facilities to replace childcare space lost with this rebuild. In other words, revisit policy CNE, facility improvements that are not funded with Montgomery County revenues, to allow outside investment. Build out the second-story shell at Carl Sandberg Learning Center. $4.4 million for 10 classrooms is a relative bargain. Restoring this project would show your commitment to early childhood and special education. The old Carl Sandberg facility is entirely unsuitable as a holding school. Innumerable significant deficiencies demanded its replacement. All the other RevX schools were demolished. This building too must go. A planned program capacity size for Southlake Elementary of 796 is not consistent with MCPS Regulation FAA RA because that has an upper limit of 750. Excessive capacity was unacceptable for Ashburton and Gaithersburg Elementarys and remains too large. Also, keep in mind that the adjacent cluster solution for Southlake Elementary would be Gaithersburg Elementary only 1.1 miles away, and that too just being relieved of its overcrowding. Then there's the reality check. The money just doesn't exist, not from the county and not from the state. Instead, we need to build better now with green retrofits versus tear down and rebuild and net zero energy schools. How many of the seven new schools have solar? Why only lead silver when we've had lead certified gold since 2006? Then again, why are we abandoning lead certification for Green Globes? The pandemic forced radical new solutions to learning. We must give this old CIP system the same treatment and overhaul it once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone. This concludes all of our comments. I'm sorry, all of our testimonies. And now we'll open it up for board member comments. And I'm going to start, coincidentally, with Mrs. O'Neil, who already had you on my list to go first.
Okay, so this question, I guess, goes to Mr. Adams. We've heard testimony the last two hearings about the Edson Lane Forest. And when we do construction projects, I know we have to do a reforestation plan, whether it's at that particular site or somewhere else. Can you explain that process or the requirements? And also, has the county done an inventory of specimen trees on this site? I mean, when I drove by, it didn't seem... I mean, there is, there are trees, but are there specimen trees heavily in this site? Do you know? And what's, but what's the reforestation efforts that were required under county code?
Sure, and two great questions. You know, I'll answer the Edson Lane property one first. So that is obviously the county's property. We did just work with them on the opportunity to, they're allowing us to go in and do an inventory check. So ultimately, a natural resource inventory. So we hope to have some results back on that in the next several weeks. Again, they have not transferred the property over to us. You know, it's being reviewed from an opportunity standpoint. You know, as we mentioned in our planning board hearings, we are showing, you know, in most cases, the worst case scenario so we can plan for stormwater management as well as forestry concerns. Speaking of forestry, when you do talk about forestry, yes, there are a forestation requirements. So we have opportunities to plant trees onsite. We have opportunities to plant trees offsite through forestry banks. The uniqueness with this project is that, right as Stansons is a phased project, we are saving several large specimen trees on this property, as is, without going into Edson Lane. But we do not receive credit for them because they are not in easements yet. But when we come back to Phase Two, we will put them in the easements, and we will ultimately have credit. So the aforestation will happen onsite, and probably we will look for opportunities to do it offsite as well. But as far as Edson Lane property goes, we're just showing concepts at the moment. And, you know, we absolutely have to do that detailed view. And obviously, the county would have to transfer that property back over to us for us to even, you know, consider building a portion of the stadium on that site.
So just following up on that, you know, I had met with Mr. Bender, his wife, Carla, I can't say her name. And, you know, they raised a number of issues, like couldn't you re-site it? Couldn't, you know, the other issue is, you know, on the property. And I understand this is a, you know, phase one and then phase two. So, but planning for phase two is also really important because it's sort of a speak now or forever hold your peace situation. But, you know, this, there is a stadium currently on site. I mean, it wasn't ever built as a full stadium. Some neighbors have written, can you refresh on the phasing? And then, you know, this, you're dealing with a rectangular field as opposed to the squares for baseball and softball.
And there's a lot of, definitely a lot of interaction between Phase One and Phase Two. Again, I think what, how we're looking at, you know, the current plan is we're looking at it from a perspective of a lot of what we're hearing tonight, right? So accessibility to a stadium. How do you, how do you, how do you park? How do you travel? How do you get to that stadium? You know, we all know there's tremendous amount of grades on that site. So, you know, citing a stadium on a lower level is going to be significantly harder to achieve all the ADA goals that we will, we will need to put in place for large, large gathering events such as stadiums. You know, I think even when you think about softball, baseball, you know, we have, we have plans to locate it up on the upper level. We have plans to locate it in between, and we're exploring all options. You know, I would say even from a forestry perspective, we have moved, we have built entire buildings around specimen trees. I mean, we, we do take great consideration of, of the forest and the natural environment, and we accommodate accordingly. But I think in this case, we certainly have to plan for, for all scenarios. We have to plan for accessibility. We have to plan for emergency vehicles. We have to plan for maintenance vehicles. And all of that is part of the consideration in the different sighting options.
Okay, thank you. So now we will go to Vice President Wolf.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank everybody for their testimony tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Dr. Daca?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. And I want to thank everybody who came or who recorded to come for us tonight.
Absolutely. Ms. Dixon?
Well, I'm glad I'm last because I wanted to just congratulate you, Ms. Evans and Mrs. Smundrowski on your reelection to the board, and also Lynn Harris, who will be sitting in this seat come December 1st. So, well done. And Shep, you've been doing a great job running these meetings on Zoom. I have to tell you that.
I appreciate it.
So, and thank you to everybody who came out to testify tonight. So now it's back to CNN.
So now we're here for Mr. Asante.
I mean, I know additional comments or questions. I just want to thank everyone who came out and testified.
Great. Ms. Bestry?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Mr. Adams about the testimony we heard from Wooton High School. We hear a lot about, we heard some similar testimony last year, and I just wanted to see if he had any information for us in terms of things that maybe were taken care of while COVID, so that the community could be updated on some progress that's been made there.
Sure. I mean, we can certainly provide the board with a full list of all of our maintenance efforts. I would say we have, we have spent a tremendous amount of time at Wooton in particular. I would say we have spent a tremendous amount of time at Wooton in particular, going through, walking the building with the principal, with the administration, with students, with staff, and looking for opportunities to do improvements ahead of, you know, the ultimate major capital project. So, yes, we can provide that detailed list and, you know, provide that as a board follow-up.
Thank you. And if we could get that to the Wooton Cluster Coordinator, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, and so we will hear from Mrs. Smandrowski. And I will say she may not be available because I know her son is going to call her from overseas. So she wanted to pop off for just a second. I did want to acknowledge that. Is that you, Mrs. Smandrowski? We can't hear you. So why don't you text me? And I can let everybody know what you're saying. We can't hear you. And so while you're doing that, while you're doing that, I'm going to go to Ms. Vestry before we end our call.
Yes, I just meant to state publicly that there was some written testimony that we all...
Can you hear me?
We can, but Ms. Vestry is talking. So can you hold on just one second and let her finish up? And then we'll get back to you. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we had written testimony. We had oral and video. And we, I just wanted to assure that everyone knows that we read the written testimony ourselves. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Smandrowski, can you go ahead and...
So she doesn't have any questions. She wanted to thank everyone that came today to provide testimony and just appreciate their advocacy. And so I will say the same. Thank you to everyone. And so tune in. So tomorrow, we will have a work session, November the sixth, discussing our reopening plans. We will have our board business meeting on November the tenth. And then we will come back again to you for another work session on November the twelfth, discussing our CIP. So thank you all for tuning in this evening. Thank you for sitting your testimony. Thank you for your patience and continue to remain safe and healthy. Have a good night. Thank you.